Not yet.
Uh, he's got, he's got an agreement and a resolution.
Yep.
I just put it in one.
One, agreement and.
The debate's agreement and this.
Okay.
Okay. Deputy clerk, can we call the media hold.
Order please.
Coach. Joe Rock call.
Got it. I'm sorry, sir. Lennon?
Here.
Boywood?
Here.
Lajah?
Here.
Faith?
Here.
Pabon? Ruiz?
Here.
Aronella?
Here.
Carmichael?
I'll make a motion to excuse Alderman Pabon and Alderman Carmichael.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, second of my fate to excuse Alderman Pabon and Carmichael. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we have just opened tonight. We have a couple items and they're both for the our community development block grant director, Director Mendocino.
Good evening. Um, so, um, the agenda today is about two, uh, action plans that we're amending. One is the 2019, one is the 2021. 2019 we need to amend because this is primarily due to the CARES Act money that we got in 2019, so we're in year 2019. So every time we adjust those funds or receive funds or anything happens with those funds, we have to keep amending that same 2019 plan. So, two things. One is the CBPG portion of it. We're amending because we're moving some funds that we have locked over primarily because of COVID and COVID. And so we're moving, um, eight four thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars into 2021 sewer project that's in this current year. And we're moving a hundred and six, one fifty-two seventeen into the Sprees project again as for 2021, which is this HUD's current year. Does anybody have questions about the CBPG portion?
Nope.
Um, so when it comes to the, uh, CARES Act money, originally we received one million, total of one million eighty-seven thousand five hundred ten dollars and forty-two cents from HUD for CARES Act. We had the whole amount of money, other than twenty thousand dollars for Housing Forward Shelter, we put the full amount to cover rent, mortgage, and utility assistance for residents of Berwind. Housing Forward received a substantial amount. We received our second allocation. Berwind held it back to do the same, to run that program on the government subsidy. Unfortunately, things didn't go well. Housing Forward, although they did help a substantial amount of residents in Berwind, they used funds from other grants. Those grants were expiring, so they had to use up those funds. We were limited with our funds to only allow three months' worth of mortgage rental and utility assistance. The funds that Housing Forward received, they grow up to six months initially and then, um, twelve months with an additional three. So it, you hold people to use those grants instead of the HUD grant. HUD then increased the amount, uh, the amount of time for six months versus three months. The problem with that, that triggered the lead, the aspect for, um, for this program. So here are residents that came to us for rental assistance and you needed it for a hundred days plus. We would then have to go to the landlord and test for lead and mediate the lead to help the, the, for the resident. So that wasn't, that wasn't working out. We were just not receiving, um, enough residents that qualified. We had people that were applying because they lost their jobs, but they didn't lose it because of COVID. They lost it because their license was suspended or they lost their job because of some type of stuff. That's not COVID. You can't report it to, um, you know, um, basically say it's COVID related. So this is where we want to move this money. Three hundred thousand dollars going to the Berwind Police Mental Health, uh, Council of Council. The city, the police department has a substantial amount of calls since COVID. A lot of them are mental health related. They want to hire four, around five counselors. We, the CARES Act money will cover the salary of two for two years. We think that that is very important, um, to the program and I think that the city, uh, the city residents will benefit. In addition, we are going to move five hundred seventy-five thousand eighty-five dollars to the Berwind Recreation, um, HVAC replacement. But we're allowed to do this with CARES Act money because the rent is in the low line area. It's also used as a warming and cooling center. It has programs for children and seniors. So we can utilize these funds and, and, you know, help with the air right now, what is, is pro, let's do whatever we can to, to alleviate any, um, issues with, with the pandemic and air and, and closed spaces. So that's what we're doing. And then another hundred seventy-five thousand is going to go to replace the bathroom. They're in very bad shape. They don't meet BDA requirements. Um, in some instances, they don't even work. So we're going to replace the toilets, the sinks, the stalls, the exhaust system, add the clean air aspect. And so I'm here basically asking you to approve these funds to work forward.
Now, is that in the 21 amended?
No, so this is all against.
That's all 19. Okay.
This is all 2019. So does anybody have any questions regarding 2019?
No questions? Okay, 21.
So with regards to the 2021, the only reason we needed to amend it is because we're moving the money from 2019 into 2021 street to the person. So we have to amend that.
Okay, so that's the only amendment?
That's the only amendment.
Okay.
Regina, what was the amount for the HVAC again? Was it?
The HVAC set aside five seventy-five oh eighty-five.
Okay.
Is that from a quote you received or just?
No, they asked.
No, we haven't got any quotes yet.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We had the current servicer go through and kind of give us an estimate of what needs to be done, but we have to go out to bid. We also probably going to be looking for an owner's management, which we'll have to pay to supervise that project and get the specs and the bids for us, so.
Why would we need that?
Well, because we can't do the specs because we don't know that business and the people who serviced it, most of them are gone now and they're not doing it. So we have to find somebody that's in that area, a mechanical engineer, so that they can do the specs for us and then also supervise the project and get the bids for the bids.
Oh, okay. Um, I, I have a question. So I know not too long ago, there was a request for project initiatives. Did I see that this, that, um, your community department had a request out, like the people had project funding or project requests?
Well, that was, yes. So that was.
What did we get out of that?
Um, initially, so if, if we were talking about the CARES Act, um, we asked for agencies to apply for this, this money, this funding. A lot of agencies receive from like CARES Act. Housing Forward received millions. Uh, that's plus received a substantial amount of money. The state of Illinois right now has a program where they are providing thirty thousand dollars in, uh, mortgage assistance. So if somebody has poor parents, if they couldn't pay the rent, their property taxes, if they have a property insurance, there's a program out there. And again, with places like Bets Plus, um, Northwest Housing Conference, State of Illinois, Cook County, they're all, everybody's kind of administering the same fund. So there are funds out there. It's just a matter of getting people, you know, that, that qualify because everything is still income based. The people that have mortgage or they're, they'll probably qualify because they're going up to a hundred fifty percent AMI. So we have these, uh, family of two. I think it's, I read my, my list a couple of weeks. It's something like a hundred and twenty or a hundred thirty thousand dollars.
I have that in the office.
Easier to qualify than for, for CPG money.
They raised, they raised it to a hundred fifty percent. That's what's making it easier now.
Our communications division also, we get updates all the time from county and from the state whenever they have these programs and these, um, grants opportunities for residents regarding COVID to help with mortgage and rental assistance. We share it also on all of our social media. So we're keeping in touch. That way we can make sure that our residents know what the state and the county has to offer.
Wait, is that answer your question or were you talking about program funding?
I thought we, I thought I saw, uh, someone noticed that was sent out that the direction became for program.
So program funding is a separate item. Explain program funding.
Didn't we send something out or did they?
There was, there, we did have a legal notice for program year 2022, which begins, uh, October first of 2022 and go to nine thirty, 2023. So we did have, um, a legal notice requesting, uh, agencies, you know, for public service, um, grants to do that.
And what percentage of the funds that we receive can go to program?
Um, not more than fifteen percent.
Right. So we have a limited amount of our funds that can go there. Um, did we complete the agencies?
We did. So that, the act, program get amended, that closed. The application, um, process closed, I believe it was in February, March. So we're in the process of, of getting recommendations and how we're going to use that one.
So the 2022 budget actually covers that already? So you don't need to.
No, no. So it's, so HUD's, your program year is complicated. So we're right now covering your 2021, which began October first of 2021. Yes, 2021 ends, thank you.
So the January taxes is always in the years?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
But it's October starting. That's, that's the complicated part.
So sometime it's, it's just really confusing. We're trying to figure out like what year. Like basically we should be done with 2019, covering that. I don't think we're completely done with 2019.
So I guess my question is, with this excess of money, would we want to remark any of that for any of these program requests?
We can't. We can't. The one thing, oh, let me backtrack a moment. HUD actually, um, canceled the fifteen percent cap for the CARES Act. They allow us to go ahead and fund agencies and that's when BDA Housing Forward sees hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars in the program, of which they spent zero. And so that's why we're reprogramming this money because they're sitting on a bottom point. And so what we did for the 2019 action plans, we did have a legal notice.
We did have a legal notice, uh, basically telling people, you know, if they would like to comment on how we should use these funds. Because we did, we do have some discretion on what we want to do.
But some of that money we were able to reutilize for the, um, counselors at the police department, which is coming through, um, as recommendations from the state, from the survey that we did a while back. So that's what, and we've got a whole, whole different aspect of how we're going to be able to do that and house it. But at least the money's there to supply those counselors at this point, the mental health counselors, so.
So are you, is it open for questions or should I wait? Do you have one?
No, of course.
I guess my thought right now, just thinking of all of this is, I mean, I, I know everything that you said. They're really great initiatives to, to fund, but I'm wondering if we want to consider some free services of some sort to families in the community. Um, I'm not sure what that is, but I'm not sure if these conversations were already had and if these keep around and then decline for some reason.
There's only, HUD will only allow us to spend the money certain ways. And what happened was initially when they came, when CARES Act money, um, became available, they threw money at municipalities and local governments and it was like, figure it out. And then guidance kept trickling in and then they would make adjustments to this guidance and they would make adjustments to this money. So we can't use it for anything, you know, governmental. We could possibly use it to maybe build a structure, remodel a structure for COVID testing and, and, um, vaccination. Well, we don't need to do that. Limited on what we could use it for public facilities, limited on, you know, agencies. A lot of agencies, again, received their own money when we put this out there, asking people to apply. They basically, you know, we had two agencies that applied and then rescinded their applications because they said they, they're sitting, they got too much money. So, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, that's all we have, um, for the committee of the whole. So if I can, motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Second.
Let in by Ruiz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll be back at eight o'clock. Don't forget, the camera stays on, folks.
Sorry. The show we sit here, the band will show you coming out from the fuse. Oh my God, we can write this script. Oh my God, I love it. I absolutely love it. Oh, yeah. Yeah, that would be awesome. I say you do it.
How are you doing? How are things? Yeah? That, okay, got it. That, that was, right, 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 right. I know where to go.
Hey there. How you guys doing? You doing good? Kind of windy and it looks like it's very, 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 like, the weather. Not yet.
Really nice. What's about, I don't know, and that's why they're made. And that they used to come from, from Maine. But they serve as eagle, eagle, really nice. So, really, it's all. Yeah, and it's been a rare, something has been, well, you know, it's been, yeah.
Yeah, no, I didn't, I probably shouldn't have touched it, you know. I was gonna take a art class for, for, for. Really? Yeah, I was gonna take it, it started with me, it started with me first. But, you know, that's not what I wanted to do. You know, so I don't, you know, I don't, I don't think my, I don't like to see it. But anyway. Rich gets his stuff every day.
Well, Rich lives here, Rich who lives here, if I had an office, I told you they were making an office for him. Let's just take the sign off the door that says, "That's all that."
I just, and you're long enough, I love. Hello, Sandy.
And they met before the race, and they got their meat. They met with me, and that's why. Talk down, talk down.
No. No, yes, it's pretty typical.
Myra disappeared today?
Hi, Sandy Dan, hi, how are you? I hear that you're doing the, I saw Megan, the other thing, dancer. Which one, well, I think, oh, I can't, maybe, maybe, or maybe, and Anders like, like, I get, there's one side.
So far.
Into the science bar gave up the place, he did, but I'm, you know, what is, if I can, I've got, or, yeah. There's three on me, I was coming down there with my car, ice cream.
I know.
Who are you? Actually, here, this is for, um, an organizational called Break the Silence. They're gonna put this on. Break the silence, it's a non-physical survey. Be a little vague?
Be a little vague.
Next, will we hold some?
Yeah. Be a little, be a little.
So, there's an organization called Space Race.
What's their, what's their?
It's, uh, the method of sheltering. So, they're gonna talk about the project they're doing.
It's gotta be better. I heard they're gonna say something to my friend. She stopped, she stopped.
Oh, I should. Yes, yes.
Deputy Clerk, can we call the council meeting to order, please?
Excuse me. Lennon?
Here.
Boywood?
Here.
LaJia?
Here.
Faith?
Here.
Pabon?
Here.
Ruiz?
Here.
Aronella?
Here.
Carmichael?
Here.
Eight present, Mayor.
Can we all rise for the pledge of allegiance and please remain standing?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could please keep on our thoughts and prayers, the family of Frank Rossi, who is an uncle to some of our police auxiliary, to Catherine Mary Helen Vabro, who's a grandmother of one of our telecommunications, and Pam Thornton, who is the mother of one of our Berwyn senior van driver, they have all recently passed, if we could please keep our men and women on the streets tonight. Thank you. If anybody wishes to address the open forum, please step forward to the swing chair to the podium, state your name and address. Jenny, would you make sure that microphone's on, please?
Testing. Okay. Good evening, council, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. On behalf of Break the Silence Foundation, my name is Sandra Diaz, I'm the chair lady for Break the Silence Foundation, I am here to talk to everyone about the Enchanted Project, a prom dress donation drive. Because the pandemic has caused financial burdens on families and prom to some being a milestone in seniors' lives, the Enchanted Project was created. The Enchanted Project is an effort for the families of high school seniors here in the city of Berwyn to have access to dresses, accessories, shoes, hairstyling, and makeup for prom. To date, we have the support of W3 Body, a women's gym where we are collecting the items, shoe carnival, and Salamanca alterations, all businesses located here in Berwyn. On behalf of Break the Silence Foundation, we would like to ask the council for support from all wards in distributing the information for the drive. Here tonight with me is Jenny Beltran, our JSA president.
Hello, everyone, my name is Jennifer Beltran, sixth ward resident and college board senior at D201 Morden West High School. I am assisting as a student liaison for Break the Silence Foundation, a domestic violence prevention center and shelter to provide the best possible prom experience for our senior girls who may not have the financial means for such an event, which is a huge milestone in our lives. We want to introduce the Enchanted Project, named after our prom theme this year, Enchanted Forest, a project created in efforts to provide free prom dresses, free footwear, makeup services, and hairstyling services in order to alleviate the financial costs that come with attending an event. As a student in Morden West, I have faced this reality and had to work multiple jobs in order to attend school events and functions. As an advocate for the Break the Silence Foundation, I feel honored to be able to give back at such a young age. If any community members would like to support our initiative, we do take monetary donations, newly or lightly worn prom dresses, or any makeup artist or hairstylist referrals. You can contact us through Jamie, J-A-M-I-E, at W3body.com, or S-D-I-A-Z at B-T-S-F-I-N-C.org. If any other community members are interested in taking one of our graphics, they're free to grab after a city council, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the open forum?
Mayor, City Council, we all know the infrastructure in Berwyn has been pretty bad. I have a son that's disabled, he goes to the doctor at 6845 Stanley Avenue. That access ramp was blocked with heavy concrete pieces and a lot of debris. It has since been cleared, I called Director Schiller and he said he would look into it, not only that ramp access, but to all the others. He did do that, even though I take his word, I checked on him. But anyhow, he took care of it. Also, there's a problem with the senior service department. When my son made an appointment on 3/21/22 for transport, Mary Depsek took the appointment. On 3/24, Maria called from senior services and said that Mary had given her the task of calling my son. Apparently, they do not assist disabled persons from the bus to the doctor's office door. I have no problem with that. My son can wheel the chair himself if there's no debris on that ramp. But Mary told him they do that all the time, that they are assisted to the doctor's door. Maria calls and says they're not. I don't like to tell anybody what to do, but they do need to be on the same page. Maria told my son that he should, that he needed to get a new wheelchair, preferably an electric one. I'm going to say here and now, no city employee should have the right to tell anybody what they need to do, what they need to buy. He's got a brand-new wheelchair, an electric one would not have gotten him over that debris. And I don't, I think she was wrong to do that. Also, she said, Maria said, that a disabled person has to have an assistant on the bus with them, I can accept that too. But, when she called my son, she said the bus driver made a mistake. And I'm going to say here and now, if a bus driver can't follow the rules of the department, she has no business driving a bus. My son, as I said, can wheel himself if there's no debris blocking the access ramp. And I would like to thank the fire department, those people are so, so well-trained in their job, I'm very grateful to them. The, Marie, Mary had said that those people will take him down the stairs to the bus, they do that. And then Maria said they don't, that the, wait, I already went over that. But anyhow, I just feel like communication could be improved, the people in that department need to be on the same page. One person can't tell a person one thing and then have the other one call and say, "No, we don't do that." She told my son they do that all the time for people. So I'm asking now, will somebody see to it that those people are on the same page, that one person does not get two different stories?
Okay.
And I want to thank those people in the fire department.
Sure.
If anybody deserves appreciation, it's them.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Mary Peronto, I live in the second ward, and I'm here to say congratulations because the city has received from the Arbor Day Foundation a growth award for this year. We've been doing proclamations for many years as a tree city, but this is the first time that I know of that the city has received an award, and I'm happy to know and to have all of you know that the Arbor Week is expanded, there's going to be a lot of celebration, hope I see some of you there. And then my final ask with all of this award and proclamation is that we can increase the number of trees that are actually planted in public spaces in Berwyn, starting next year, thank you.
We've actually received six years of the growth award.
Okay.
Yeah, they sent us a follow-up to let us know that we have six years of growth.
Okay, well, thanks for correcting me.
Sure, no problem.
Just want to see more trees on the parkways, thank you.
Okay.
So Mayor Lovero and City Council, in Berwyn, under Mayor Robert Lovero's administration, you can be a police officer who is named as a defendant in five federal civil rights lawsuits costing taxpayers more than $80,000 in settlements, you can lose your gun during a drunken fight at Peisants in 2016, and you can still earn a six-figure salary, Officer David Green gets paid $66 an hour, you can still be promoted to sergeant, as Green was last year, you can have more residents speak out against you than for you at an open forum, and still have City Council and Mayor Lovero approve your promotion. You can still be recommended again, just one year later, by Mayor Lovero and Chief Samaglia for an appointment to division commander. That appointment is happening today because your political party mayor has enough votes to pass it. Alderman Lennon, Boyward, LaJia, Faith, and Aronella are set to do what they always do when they have the But just want to see more trees on the parkways. Thank you.
Okay.
Louise Chavez, 16th and Richland. So Mayor Lovero and city council, in Berwyn, under Mayor Robert Lovero's administration, you can be a police officer who is named as a defendant in five federal civil rights lawsuits costing taxpayers more than $80,000 in settlements. You can lose your gun during a drunken fight at Peisants in 2016, and you can still earn a six-figure salary. Officer David Green gets paid $66 an hour. You can still be promoted to sergeant, as Green was last year. You can have more residents speak out against you than for you at an open forum and still have city council and Mayor Lovero approve your promotion. You can still be recommended again, just one year later, by Mayor Lovero and Chief Samoglia for an appointment to division commander. That appointment is happening today because your political party mayor has enough votes to pass it. Alderman Lennon, Woywood, LaJah, Faith, and Aronella are set to do what they always do when they have the honor to sit in these seats, and that is to nod and say, "Yes, mayor." Last January, when people spoke out against Green's promotion to sergeant, mayor, you said there were several officers listed in those lawsuits, as they normally are in these types of cases. So to say Detective Green cost the city money, he and he alone, is misinformation. That was your only defense, and your lawyer. Nothing about Green's unacceptable pattern of violence. Your defense, in short, was that in the Berwyn Police Department, there's not just one bad apple, there's many. A police officer with this history of excessive force should have been fired, not promoted. Yet Mayor Lovero, Chief Samoglia, Alderman Lennon, Alderman Woywood, Alderman LaJah, Alderman Faith, and Alderman Aronella continue to reward a violent officer at the expense of public safety, public trust, and taxpayer dollars. It is a pattern of police corruption and political patronage in your administration that includes six members of Chief Samoglia's family being on the city payroll, costing Berwyn residents $224 an hour, according to City of Berwyn payroll records from 2021. There's several others. I'm not going to go through it. Those are just a few examples. City council must know, must vote no to Green's appointment and commit to identifying and rectifying the systemic issues that had led to the continued promotion of an officer with a history of excessive lawsuits and inappropriate behavior. Council must also implement safeguards to protect our community from those who betray their oath to protect and serve. So those bullet points I skipped over, and those are just a few, there's a lot more information. And so I invite the public to read the lawsuits in their entirety, the police record of what happened at Peisants in its entirety, and additional documentation at YBerwyn.net. Thank you.
Thank you.
Claudia Yala, City Communications. I just wanted to thank all the elected officials, the, and the Cook County 16th District Women Leader, Leaders, Robert, Mayor Robert J. Lovero, Gail Lovero, the Administrative Manager Gil Pena, the Office of the 16th District Cook County Commissioners Office Frank Aguilar, Audra Wilson, Espranza Gama, Reyna Torres, and the entire Monsi Stapas Restaurant. Thank you for supporting the event that we had recently at Monsi's on March 31st for the Women's History Month. It also acknowledged Jamie Cuchera, which is the executive director at the YMCA. She has the 2022 Anson Karen Award. So I just wanted to thank Jamie, Sandra, and all the other panelists that were present and gave, you know, their time for this first-ever Women's Convite of the 16th District, which brought together 24 communities. So thank you, everybody, for being there. I appreciate the support.
Thank you.
Good evening. Karina Lopez on 18th and Kyler. I do want to second what Lou said earlier, but I also wanted to speak on a different matter. Violence prevention is a very important issue, and I think we understand that residents are looking for new and creative ways to address that. I wanted to urge members of the council and the city administration to look into the grant funding available through the Cook County Justice Advisory Council and the Office of Firearm Violence Prevention. They both have funding available to really address root causes of violence, and that is something that I believe we desperately need in Berwyn. So I would hope that social service organizations can be engaged and partnering with the city can think about what to provide the city through applying for those dollars. The Office of firearm Violence Prevention specifically outlined Berwyn in a short list of specific cities that they want to focus on. So I feel like that's a call to us, and I hope that we can respond. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for open forum from the audience? Alderman, anything for open forum?
I would like to thank all the residents and business owners who attended the first ward depot project meeting, to include Bob Schiller, Dan Schiller, and Nicole Campbell as well.
Okay. Anybody else for open forum?
Mayor, I just wanted to share with everyone, some of you may know that I host a Women's History Month event every year except during COVID. And during that year, we usually recognize a community leader, one that we identify that's constantly giving back and supporting the community in different capacities, either as a volunteer, as an elected official, or an appointed person by yourself. We call it the Adelante Award, and adelante in Spanish is forging forward, pushing through. So that's kind of what our leaders are, always looking to make change and being that champion of change. And this year, we, I feel that we identified and recognized a very important leader in our community, and that was Anna Espinoza, who is our first Latina-elected fire and police commissioner. So I just want to, if you have a chance and you see Anna out and about, please congratulate her on this very esteemed award. We're recognizing her for her 30 years of service to Berwyn. As a volunteer, appointed, and elected official, she has definitely done an outstanding job for our community. So please, if you see her, recognize her, congratulate her, and I want to thank my colleagues who were at the event. They're applauding her when she received her award.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, item C1, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
The city clerk's office received two emails today for open forum. They were received from Melissa, and I hope I'm pronouncing this correct, Maritzen, and from Resomo Collective. Copies of those were made and distributed to the city officials.
Okay, thank you. Item C1, please.
Excuse me. Item C1 is the Committee of the Whole and the Regular City Council minutes of March 22nd.
I will make the motion to approve the minutes of the Committee of the Whole and Regular City Council meeting for March 22nd, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Faith, to concur, to approve the minutes for the Committee of the Whole and the City Council meeting of March 22nd, 2022. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item E1, please.
Item E1 is a resolution submitted by the BDC authorizing and approving a certain real estate conveyance agreement between Chicago Title and Trust Company as trustee under a trust agreement dated January 1st, 2013, and known as Trust Number 8002361156 and the City of Berwyn for the City of Berwyn, Cook County of Cook, State of Illinois.
I'll make the motion to approve the real estate conveyance agreement and the resolution approving the purchase of 6627 Stanley Avenue, fix the necessary signatures, and send it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Woywood, to concur with the Development Corporation and approve the real estate convenience agreement and resolution for the purchase of 6627 Stanley Avenue, affix the necessary signatures, and place it on its way to passage. All those in favor on the call, the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Woywood?
Aye.
LaJah?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Aronella?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Eight ayes, mayor.
Motion carried. Item F1, please.
Item, item F1 is the appointment of David Green as division commander to the Berwyn Police Department.
I move that we concur with Mayor Robert Lovero and his appointment of Sergeant David Green as division commander of the Berwyn Police Department.
Second.
Motion by LaJah, seconded by Lennon, to concur with my appointment of David Green as division commander with the Berwyn Police Department. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, can we take a roll call, please?
Excuse me. Lennon?
Aye.
Woywood?
Aye.
LaJah?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Pabon?
Nay.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Aronella?
Aye.
Carmichael?
No.
That would be six ayes and two nays.
Motion carried. Item F2, please.
Excuse me. Item F2 is the appointment of Erica Harris to the library board.
I'll make a motion to concur with Mayor Lovero's recommendation to appoint Erica Harris to the library board, and I'd like to thank Barbara Corbell for her years of service, serving on the library board as well.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Faith, to approve the appointment of Erica Harris to the library board, and thank Barb Corbell for her many years of service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Erica, would you please come up?
Hi. You may to write the hand. You, Erica Harris, have you been appointed to the library board in the City of Berwyn in the County of Cook, as fore-said, for a three-year term? So I'll swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the City of Berwyn Library Board according to the best of your ability. Take it.
Come on, next. Luigi, come on, Luigi.
We love Luigi. He's our favorite.
No, no, take the picture. That's your, you and your family.
Oh, okay.
Congratulations, Erica. Item F3, please.
Item F3 is an Arbor Day Award and proclamation. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Julius Sterling Morton, newspaper editor, governor of Nebraska, third United States Secretary of Agriculture, and namesake for the J. Sterling Morton West and East High School campus in Berwyn and Cicero, Morton College of Cicero, the Morton Arboretum in Lyle, and avid agriculturist, advocate noted for being the person who first proposed the idea of Arbor Day, the tree plant dress holiday, on January 4th, 1872, through the State Board of Agriculture. And whereas so successful was the first Arbor Day with over 1 million trees planted that it made an annual event beginning in 1874, and in 1885, the state legislature passed an act specifying April 22nd as the anniversary of Morton's birth as the holiday marker, which is now observed throughout the world. And whereas, in 2022 commemorates the 150th anniversary of Arbor Day. And whereas, the City of Berwyn has been annually recognized by the Arbor Day Foundation as a Tree City USA community for 34 years, and received the 2021 Tree City Growth Award. And whereas, the North Berwyn Park District, Berwyn Park District, Berwyn School Districts, J. Sterling Morton, District 201, North Berwyn School District 98, Berwyn South District 100, the Berwyn Public Library, and the City of Berwyn Public Works have all come together for a citywide collaboration, including month-long tree planting and educational activities. And whereas, trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of a business area, and beautify our community. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed that I, Mayor Robert J., Mayor Robert Lovero, my apologies, and the esteemed members of the city council hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 Tremendous Trees Arbor Day Celebration in the City of Berwyn, and call upon public officials, educators, and residents to observe this month by participating in the schedule of activities from April 4th through the 30th, 2022, which can be viewed from the City of Berwyn, or BerwynEvents.info events page."
Alicia?
Oh, okay. I make a motion that we adopt the proclamation, affix the necessary signatures, and send it on its way to passage. And I just want to echo what Mary presented during open forum. I'm really proud and excited that this is going to be our inaugural year of celebrating our Arbor Day proclamation and our award. Please, residents, if you can, attend the week-long events that will be taking place. A lot of community leaders and residents have spent a lot of time coordinating this, really looking towards tree education and the importance of them, and just building a more solid ecosystem here in our community. So I hope that you all take advantage of it. And I motion that we adopt the resolution and fix the necessary signatures and send it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Ruiz. I'm going to skip the second to Aronella.
That's fine.
Motion to adopt the resolution to fix the necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item I1, please.
Item I1 is, excuse me, Alderman Ruiz's Sixth Ward Recycle Event, scheduled for Saturday, May 7th, 2022, in the Vason Fairway.
I'd like to make a motion for this event to be approved. It is, although it's a sixth ward community event, the event is open to all. And also, I'd like to modify this if I can, make a motion to modify it. It's actually going to go from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So instead of either/or, it'll be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Motion by Ruiz, seconded by Faith, to approve the Sixth Ward Recycle Event on Saturday, May 7th, 2022, with the necessary assistance from the city to go from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item I2, please.
Item I2 is, again, from Alderman Ruiz. It's a request to reconsider to approve handicap parking space application for 6539 West 16th Street.
I'd like to make a motion for my colleagues' approval on this. As noted in my communication, this was previously denied at our March 8 meeting. I did meet with the applicant and had a very extensive conversation with him. He is honestly challenged and is in need of the handicap space, so I would appreciate your approval on this.
Second.
Motion by Ruiz, seconded by Lennon, to override the denial and approve the application number 1387 for the handicap space. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J1, please.
Item J1 is from Public Works Director Schiller. It's a supplemental resolution.
I'd like to make a motion that we concur with Director Schiller's recommendation to approve the supplemental resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for the amount of $750,000 for resurfacing various blocks within our city of Berwyn, fix the necessary signatures, and send it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Ruiz, seconded by Faith, to concur with Director Schiller and approve the supplemental resolution for improvement for the Illinois Highway Code for the amount of $750,000 grant for the resurfacing of various blocks within the city. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J2, please.
Item J2 is an ordinance amending Section 46204 of the codified ordinance regarding the classification of license fees and their rate structure for the City of Berwyn, County of Cook, State of Illinois.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the ordinance amending Section 462.04 to codify ordinances regarding the classification of license fees and their rate structure for the City of Berwyn, County of Cook. This is to solidify our approval of the free veteran sticker. This is just going to codify it and send it on, fix the necessary signatures and send it on its way to passage.
Second.
Who seconded? LaJah? Motion by Ruiz, seconded by LaJah, to adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 46204 to provide for a different structure and classification of the vehicle tags, affix the necessary signatures, and place it on its way to passage. All those in favor on the call, the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Woywood?
Aye.
LaJah?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Aronella?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Eight ayes, eight ayes, mayor.
Motion carried. Item- Item J3, please.
Item J3 is a resolution to adopt the 2021 CDBG amended annual action plan.
Be my motion to approve resolution approving the City of Berwyn's amended action plan for program year 2021 for community development block grant funds, and authorize and submit to the same to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and have the corporate authorities fix necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Faith, seconded by Lennon, to concur with Director Mendocino and approve the 2021 amended annual action plan for the CDBG funds, affix the necessary signatures, place it on its way to passage, and supply the, to HUD, the written authorization. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J4, please.
Item J4 is another communication from Director Mendocino to approve the 2019 CDBG third amended annual action plan.
Be my motion to approve resolution authorizing and approving the City of Berwyn's third amended action plan for the program year 2019 for community development block grant funds, and to include and implement the coronavirus aid relief and economic security Act Community Development Block Grant COVID-19 Fund, and submission of the same to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, authorize the corporate authorities to fix necessary signatures, and place it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Faith, seconded by Lennon, to concur with Director Mendocino, approve the 2019 third amended annual action plan, including those sums of money as per the designation of the resolution, send it to HUD, affix the necessary signatures, and place it on its way to passage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J5, please.
Item J5 is a communication from Library Director Shidi in regards to the 60th anniversary of the formation of the Beatles. They are requesting to host an event at the library and inclusive of city services.
I'll make a motion to approve the library event and send the appropriate, send this communication to the appropriate departments to coordinate with the library to assist.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Woywood, to concur with Director Shidi and allow the event to occur on Saturday, June 11th, 2022, from 6:00 PM to 7:30. Send the communication to necessary city service, for the necessary city services. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J6, please.
Item J6 is a second communication from Library Director Shidi, requesting authorization to host its annual summer reading challenge kickoff event on Saturday, June 4th, from 10:00 to noon.
I'll make a motion to approve the summer reading event and send this communication to the appropriate city services to assist with the setup and street closures.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Pabon, to concur with Director Shidi and approve the summer reading challenge kickoff event Saturday, June 4th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and send the communication to necessary cities, for necessary city services. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J7, please.
Item J7 is a communication from the City Communication Division, and it's the March 2022 Media Campaigns and Outreach Overview.
I make a motion to accept this communication as informational.
Second.
Motion accepts as information by Carmichael, seconded by Lennon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Carmichael, to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Alderman at committee meetings, Alderman Lennon?
Call the chair.
Alderman Woywood?
Call the chair.
Alderman Leja?
Call of the chair.
Alderman Faith?
Call the chair.
Alderman Pabon?
We have an ad hoc rat abatement committee meeting happening Wednesday, April 20th. It's going to be here on the second floor in the conference room, starting at 11:00 AM.
Alderman Ruiz?
I don't have a Alderman at committee meeting, but I do have a ward cleanup scheduled for Saturday, April 30th, starting at 10:00 AM. The meeting location will be the North Berwyn Park District, District Office on 16th and Wesley. All are welcome to join us.
Alderman Aronella?
I have also a ward cleanup on the 30th, 9:00 AM, behind VFW Hall. All are welcomed.
Alderman Carmichael?
I have a communication meeting on April 27th, Wednesday, at 6:00 PM, right here.
Okay.
And I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion adjourned by Carmichael, seconded by Lennon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Don't forget your key.